Six feet up, yeah. All right. Jamie Redd?
Yes.
All right. 6:00 PM, we'll call this meeting to order. It's the Dunes City Council regular session, March 6, 2024, at 6:00 PM. City Administrator, roll call please.
Let's luck everybody here.
Thank you. Please join me in place of leader.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Consideration of the agenda, do you have any vision for future reduction? Okay. Anyone else? If not, any motion to approve the agenda?
So lose.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think it's unanimous. Consent agenda is item six, that will be items A, B, C, and D. We have passed meeting minutes, bills and receipts. Does anyone have any comments on meeting minutes, anything before we move on? Seeing none, or any comment?
Sir?
All those in favor?
Aye.
That takes us to announcements and correspondence.
I received a letter from Jeanie Jackson, and you have it before you?
All right.
If you want me to read it into the record, I can.
Well, our council procedure doesn't require reading to be put as record. It would be part of the record. Does anyone have any questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. We'll include this in the record. Thanks for your comments. Item seven is citizen input on items not being discussed in a public hearing tonight. Do we have anyone that wants to speak that's not related to our public hearing tonight?
I would like to.
Okay. Ms. Jackson?
Yeah, I just would like, first of all, I want to say to all of you, this is my husband Fred, who has accompanied me here tonight. I know a lot of you have heard me talk about him, but there he is in the flesh. And thank you for, you know, reading my letter. And I just wanted to say it is important, very important, that we continue to work on the budget. I know you've been diligently trying to do that, but I don't see how we can continue to be a city without a working budget. And so I thank you. And also, I just would like to comment, and I don't think that's on the agenda tonight, so I may talk about it, but is the debate at work? I just wanted to say something on behalf of short-term rentals, just that, you know, I hope we'll continue to discuss this subject, I see that you are tonight.
That is on the agenda.
Thank you.
If we can get to it, it's at the end of all this.
Yes. Yeah, I had earlier looked at the agenda when that wasn't posted yet, so I'm glad you're still discussing that because it's a big subject.
For sure.
And so, and thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to item eight. Mayor's report, I just have a couple of things. Our local contact for the Lane County Public Safety Committee is Keith Cole, and I have not been able to get in touch with Keith, but I will try again. What's the Senate Bill 1576, the recreational immunity? That passed out of the Senate, was approved by the House, it is on the governor's desk for signature. She has thirty days to sign, so I verified with the staff it has not been signed. And then, Jamie, have you heard anything about the Dunes City Triathlon?
I have asked Blair, but no, I haven't. I have emailed him and called him.
Okay.
So is that the one on Little People Lake?
Yes.
So that, I heard it's a park, and now the manager's at the park, and they're bouncing all around, and maybe push all the way to September, October.
Right now, their webpage says it's the Oregon Dunes Triathlon with a possible date of May 13th, so, and it says it's in Florence, and I don't know if that's the same, the same location, or if they're moving it, so I don't know. It looks like it may change this year. There's no signups or anything yet.
Right, but on the website, it was for last year.
Right. If you look for Dune City is, but right now, the same promoter has an Oregon Dunes Try on May 13th in Florence.
And that's what it's called, the Oregon Dunes Triathlon.
No, the previous was the Dunes City Triathlon.
No. It's always been the Oregon Dunes Triathlon.
Are they talking about an alternative location, like Florence versus Dunes City?
That's why I asked, because I haven't asked them.
I'm pretty sure they do.
All I know is the, because the Park Service, they haven't done their permits, and they're saying because the weather was horrible in June of last year, they're kicking back into Q4, was what the Park Service person said.
All right. Very good. That's all I have.
I have nothing to report for the community center.
Okay. How about water quality?
Water quality, I finally heard back from the state of Oregon. They sent me some material and requested a meeting. I asked them to let me review the material they sent, and then we'll put a meeting together, and we'll continue working on this.
Very good. Do we have road reports?
Not at this time.
Okay. And permit report, I think we have that in.
That's in your page.
Okay. Any questions on the permit? All right. Seeing none, we can move on to new business. We have the appointment of a planning commissioner.
And this is the appointment that you refer to the planning commission? They did make a consideration and entered a recommendation that you appoint Mr. Runden.
All right. Very good. Any questions or comments, discussion?
Why are we here?
Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to appoint Sean Runden to the planning. All right. Do you have a second?
Two.
Yeah. Good one.
I've got four or five of them at this point.
Okay.
I could take one for us.
I don't know them, sorry. Any names? All right. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item nine B is a discussion on a meeting greet. This would be a casual meeting or a social meeting, so the entire mayor and council contend, but there will be no business of the council. So we had a request for a discussion, and I would love to have something that's outside of the council chambers.
Yes. I'd like to open up for a meet and greet for the way citizens can individually talk to us. Of course, not in regards to anything pertaining to, that applies to the city, so that hopefully they can understand us as people, and that we too are citizens here, so.
And how do you want to?
Counsel Richard, or Rich Olson and I talked about a possible location, and I'm going to let him kind of take over that, because he also talked about food. That's his.
Yeah. I offered that we could host it at Darling's, and I would put together like hot dogs and drinks and stuff like that, that people could come and just relax, and if they want to talk to you and come up and talk, and just get to know everybody.
Yep.
Do you have a date range?
We didn't really talk about a date. Basically, anything Tuesday through Thursday until about the first of May is pretty much open, so.
So almost anybody can adequately forecast our weather.
Nope.
Could rain, it could be sunny.
I would encourage people to come with all four seasons of clothing availability, but I think it's a good thing to be out there. And I thank you, Counsel Olson, for volunteering your location and providing the drinks and food, so. I think it's important for our citizens to know who we are, and that we can know who they are, and perhaps open it up to the citizens who are afraid or not able to come to these meetings to voice their concerns or be involved, due to one reason or not, that they could join, as they are just as important as all.
All right. If you have until the end of April, that's five weeks or so, we should, we should pick a date as soon as possible. I don't know if you guys are prepared to pick one tonight, but.
I could, I could get with Melissa here before our next meeting, and we can come up with a little more solid date, I think, and go from there, if that works for everybody.
I think so. So if we approve the concept, and it's not a council meeting or anything, it could really be any date you guys decide, right? If we can make it, we make it. Obviously, there's a couple Wednesdays in there, we have council meetings and our budget meetings, but I'm going to tell them.
I will just say that I'm tee time Thursday.
What, evening?
Till about 6:30.
Okay. Yeah, what time do you guys think?
I don't think we actually want to pass that, but I was saying where, you know, 4:00 to, you know, 4:35, say 5:00. I mean, a lot of people work, so we need to take account for that.
Right. And it doesn't mean that.
But it doesn't mean we have to be there all one time, too, you know? People got to come in a few minutes, then, you know, because this is just a meet and greet, it's to reband as a Dunes City.
I like that. Five or five to seven or something.
On Tuesday?
Tuesday or whatever.
Wednesday is, we have a recurring opportunity, so if somebody's perpetually booked on Wednesdays, we should move it to a different day. Thursday's the greatest option to use.
We'll look at a Tuesday then, if that works for you.
I have one week that's open on Thursday, that we have a one-week break between blocks, so.
We'll shoot for Tuesday.
And we do have to recall that there's, you know, an outset of a budget for meeting, meeting that potentially could displace our work study. So his proposal was at the 16th for to move this to the council meeting, too?
The third would be budget, 10th is budget, and have to figure out whether you're going to have the work session on the third, before or after, or not at all. And then the 10th would be for the budget consideration, no, no, we'll put the budget consideration of the regular city council meeting on the 16th.
16. So that would be Tuesday, so Wednesday, that week is open, 7th.
Well, we're just kind of looking at the dates. 16th is a Tuesday, so the day on Tuesdays would be the 23rd and the 30th.
One of those work.
No, unless we do it as on April 9th. But that's coming up pretty quickly.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's one, two, three weeks on the 9th, that'd be three weeks from now.
I got tickets for Penn and Teller at the whole.
So the 9th, 23rd, or 30th is what we're looking at?
Don't do the 23rd.
9th or the 23rd?
Not the 23rd.
Oh, not the 23rd.
He's going to Penn and Teller.
Yeah.
My husband's having surgery that day.
On 23rd?
Okay.
And by the 30th, that won't be here. So I'm actually not prepared for every day until 26th.
I would have to, I believe we probably can't, we should be able to do the 9th without any problem. Yeah. Let's just go ahead and say it.
9?
Yeah. 9.
I hope you actually need a blown one, you lost weight.
Give me a hole in.
What time?
By the 7?
By the 7.
Darling's.
Yeah. So do we need a motion or approval for that, or this is just a discussion? This is a casual?
Just a discussion.
All right. All right. We're going to get together and everyone will hear it.
How, how do you propose that this be advertised?
We can put it on our webpage as city council meeting. I mean, it's the time and dates, but there's no action items, and then we'll put it on the Dunes City Facebook page.
It is, so, you know, it'll be on there.
We'll be streaming live to the back right now, we could have millions of people show up.
Don't think we talked about doing any media.
Millions. Yeah, I think most of the word is out.
A long time ago, the way it was done is to laminate the announcement and stick it to the stop signs, so that people walking would see it, or if they drove up and stopped.
They don't stop at that stop sign.
They don't stop hardly at any of them. But maybe if there were some things right there, that might work.
You want to deface a stop sign.
If you make handful of flyers, we will all stick one on the stop sign yours.
I will not, so I will not. I will not stop sign, no.
I'll do two of them.
I don't want to defer somebody from reading this stop sign.
I'll put it on the sign, those get a lot of attention, too. Yeah, if you want us to push some handles. Yeah. All right. Okay. Next is item 10, we have a public hearing tonight. Mr. Jack Thomas Claycombe has requested an appeal. And I have some rules I need to read, some instructions. Okay. For all those here tonight, we have an appeal of a code enforcement action. A consideration of appeal of code enforcement officer order should be treated as a quasi-judicial action since it affects clearly identifiable property and at least references standards that have been met or not been met. A public hearing is required. City council meetings will be asked if they have any ex parte contacts with the property or any positive or negative bias towards the property owner and/or a conflict of interest. We all have a memo that outlines those provisions that could be violated, so I need to ask each of the council if they need to reclusive themselves from this item. Well, start with you. Do you have any reason?
No.
Okay. Chris?
I do not.
You don't? No, I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
And, okay. And now I need to ask the audience if there is anyone that wants to challenge any council member or the mayor's impartiality. Seeing none? The process will go something like this. This is a denovo hearing, which means that any participant is entitled to raise any issue or concern that should be addressed in a decision concerning this specific matter. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the approval criteria stated above or other standards that you believe apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue will preclude the ability to raise that issue on appeal before the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals, LUMA. Failure to raise concerns relating to incorposed condition of approval will prevent the participant from seeking damages in circuit court. Please give your name and address before you testify. Any party may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application. This request should be granted by either continuing the public hearing or leaving the record at least for at least an additional seven days. So testimony will go into court. I'm going to ask for a report from staff, the code enforcement officer, and any witnesses brought with the code enforcement officer. And then I'm going to ask you, Mr. Claycombe, to present your opposition and bring forward any witnesses on your behalf. And then code enforcement officer will enter any additional evidence or rebuttal if she so desires, and then you may enter additional evidence or response in opposition. And then there'll be questions by the council. We'll close the public hearing, and then we'll deliver. Do you have any questions before we proceed?
I was trying to think about this, but also halfway hearing, this meeting you're talking about. Did I understand that that's like a social meeting? You're trying to get together and meet someplace?
Yes, our other meeting, yes.
Okay.
Just a meet and greet.
Okay. Is there any possibility? I would love to offer up my property for everyone to come and have that party there. It's, I couldn't have done this two years ago when I bought the property, but it's a beautiful party place now.
I think we'll be at Darling's Marina, but thanks for the office. But specific to the procedure, do you have any questions or comments before we proceed?
Only the, this is what's been given to me, what, four or five different deliveries to my home, and it's my understanding that I'm paying for all of this, and I hope I'm going to be given more than, you know, 10, 15 minutes to go through. I've tried to prepare as much as possible chronologically.
Yeah, this is not a three-minute comment. You'll have your opportunity to make your presentation.
Okay.
If you're ready to proceed to that. And I know you, you requested with your appeal, you requested additional documentation. If you need additional time to digest all that, you could request a continuance to the next meeting as well.
No, that's just all about, I won't need that. Let's do it real quick. Nothing in there, particularly with my name on it or anything, it's just like rules and so.
So you're ready to proceed?
I'm trying. I'd love to.
All right. I'll take that as a yes. I think, then I'm going to start with a request for a report from staff.
First, I want to make sure you understand that the only, the only defendant in this case that asked for an appeal of the decision was Mr. Claycombe.
Okay.
So I will be moving forward with penalties against Mr. Wells and Mr. Salinas as a result. But for now, you're only looking at those provisions where Mr. Claycombe is responsible for the violation. Tonight, you'll be considering a code violation action called a quasi-judicial action. The distinction between legislative and quasi-judicial functions of local government units determines the extent of procedural safeguards afforded members of the public who are affected by a proposed governmental action. Legislative acts affect a broad class of individuals and set general rules and public policy, and the decision makers have discretion whether to consider a matter. Quasi-judicial actions, however, are narrower in scope, focusing on specific situations and applying general rules or policies to those situations where a process, once initiated, must be carried through to the final resolution or decision. I just wanted you to be aware that this isn't a matter of, I like him or I don't like him, it is a matter of what does the code say, and what did he do, is it a violation? It's cut and dry. Okay. I'll turn your attention to page three, at the findings of fact. Mr. Jack Thomas Claycombe is the property owner of property located at 5104 Ford Way, and bearing map and tax lot number, and attached as exhibit A is a copy of the D that shows that he is the owner of the property. On Thursday, July 14, 2022, Dunes City Planning Secretary Lonnie Norona received a telephone inquiry from Mr. Claycombe, asking for the status of the existing septic system and Dunes City Code for partitioning his property. Mr. Claycombe stated he wanted to place two or three recreational vehicles on the property to provide residences for friends. Planning Secretary Norona responded via email outlining Dunes City's requirements for partitioning land, included a Dunes City application for considering land division, links for contacting the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, and Lane County Onsite Wastewater about septic system requirements, an excerpt from Dunes City Code specifying that Dunes City Code allows RVs only in RV parks, and a link to all Dunes City zoning and development code, as attached here, too, as exhibit V, and incorporated by reference herein. Basically, she did what we do at the city when someone inquires about developing a piece of property and their uses, asking, can I do this and can I do not do that? We get a lot of those requests. On December 5, 2022, when I arrived at the office, I was met by John and Tina DeVries, who are the complainants in the matter. They are also residents on Ford Way. The DeVries met with me to relay their concerns regarding a neighboring property where a lot of work with big excavating equipment and the removal of a lot of trees and brush was being done in the shoreline area, and in some instances, in the water itself. They also indicated that they had heard Mr. Claycombe boast that he would rather pay a fine than apply for permits and be denied. During the conversation with the DeVries, they indicated that a truck bearing the name of Wells Tree and Landscaping was parked in front of Mr. DeVries' home at all times the downing of the trees, removal of brush was taking place. After speaking with the DeVries, Mrs. Mills asked if me, I asked if they would be willing to sign a complaint form, they agreed and did, and a copy is attached, because they believed that damage was being done substantial enough to cause damage to the water quality of glowing lake. Later that same day, Pam Palmer, our permit administrator, and myself traveled to the property to install a stop work order. Upon arrival of the property, Mr. Claycombe, who is a very nice man, welcomed us in the driveway and directed us where to park. He then asked if we were from Dunes City, at which time I admitted, I told him that yes, we were, and that I was the code enforcement officer, and gave him my business card. Mr. Claycombe indicated he was glad we came by. He was from California and doesn't know what he is and isn't allowed to do on the property. Skip all that, because that doesn't affect, I'm skipping paragraphs eight and nine, because those have to do with contacts with the other defendants in the action. And it talks about the business licenses that were necessary for someone to do work in the city, and that neither of those individuals had an active business license at the time that the work was being done. During the investigation of the violations, Mr. Claycombe was extremely cooperative and helpful, and provided the name of the contractor he hired for the tree and brush removal. Mr. Claycombe also permitted permit administrator Pam Palmer to take photographs, and you'll see those photographs, I'll refer to them now, if you want to go through them real In exhibit D. The first photograph is an aerial photograph of the property, and it, so you'll see that the property, this is the dock area, the property goes all the way around, and this is the current beach area, and these, or you can see how wooded it is. This is from 2022, or, well, I don't know, I don't know when the aerial photograph is, but it's Google Earth.
So it's pre?
Pre-action.
Here we go.
But we don't. But we don't know what year it was taken.
Well, we don't even know when it was taken.
No, we don't. And this was the day that we went to visit the property. Installed a beautiful sidewalk, rock sidewalk along the back of the building.
I have a question.
Yes.
The dock is not part of this?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Other than the fact, and I didn't really mention it, but the dock, I didn't bring complaint on that. The dock was redone.
Previously permitted to the state?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was pre-existing, but it had been refurbished without a permit. And there is a requirement to do that, but I didn't pursue that.
But it was a new dock without any permit?
No, no.
Not since I owned it.
You didn't refurbish it?
No, I noticed one new two-by-six board on there that had been replaced.
Well, then he's allowed to do that without a permit.
Just.
Which is part of why I didn't bring it up because I didn't know all the details. The biggest concern for me was the activity that was taking place near the fire pit. Pam and I, permit tech Pam and I measured from the water, the better picture, the next picture shows it better. We measured from the water line to the edge of the fire pit and that's 17 feet. Our code requires that you not do anything within 25 feet. It's a no-touch zone. And yes, there's a picture of the dock in there. I think it's readable. It's supposed to be straight, but I think it's gorgeous.
And question on distance to water level. Does the code say based on what elevation?
Does the ordinary water high mark.
Okay.
High watermark. Right now, that's considered to be 12.9 feet in elevation.
25 feet from there?
Yeah.
And when this picture was taken, it was July?
No.
That when the photos was?
It was late in the fall. Was it late in the fall?
Oh, December.
I can't remember.
I think the first.
Yeah, whatever day it went out there, it's what I've already said.
February 7th, 2023 or?
No, December 5th. It's the first day that it went out there.
Okay.
Okay, went out there, yeah.
Got it. So do we have any idea what water surface elevation was at the same time?
No, I do not.
Okay.
We can find out.
But probably not high water, it wouldn't have been above 9. Or would it? Is there a possibility?
Well, 12.9 is its ordinary mark. The ordinary high. It's not in a flooded in or high water, it's just the ordinary high. What was the high water that day? Rich, Rick?
I was just looking to see if maybe I had it.
Yeah, I know. Another concern was, if you look at this photo, you'll see that this area, which is to the east, west, thank you, west of the house, is a wetland. And it is designated as a wetland on the state's wetland designation map. And at the time, Mr. Claycombe told me that he thought it was beautiful over there and picked up this nice little area looking like an island and cleaned it out and had them put a road in. And I asked him if he had put a culvert in so that the water could still continue to flow to the wetlands. And he told me that no, it had not. But later, he told me that there was one. So I'm not really sure. I didn't get on my hands and knees to go crawl and.
Was a culvert?
Huh?
I told you there was a culvert?
Yeah, when I talked to you later at one of the meetings.
So do we believe at this time the wetlands disended?
I don't know. I honestly don't know.
What are these studies? Hasn't anybody gone out there to do any, like a DEQ?
I request the state to do it and they wanted us to get our part done before he lays stuff in. This is just another photo of all the downed trees and stuff that he had piled near the water. There were a massive number of trees taken out. However, in his defense, some of them were definitely not going to last much longer. They were rotten, really, really badly rotten. So some of them needed to come out. And I did not do an inventory to determine which ones didn't. I just knew that a lot of the land next to the shoreline had been cleared. And this is an example. Now, you can see from this photo that he does have a lot of problems with erosion on that. And because he is, he's right in the spot where the water's going to hit him pretty good. But his answer was to throw concrete blocks and asphalt and things like that down there to try and stop it. And of course, especially the asphalt is of great concern for those of us who drink at a boiling point. Now, this, this photo was just to show you that this is where the asphalt was dumped and it was going into the lake. The other is to show you the edge. Now, this, he did leave an edge of trees and brush along the water line, but it's no way 25 feet worth.
Does the, does the riparian permit, permit do work in the riparian zone? That's allowed to be 50 feet wide or?
25 is no touch. The next 25 is no shorter than three feet.
From the high watermark?
I'm sorry?
From the high watermark?
From the ordinary high watermark. If flooding, that's a rough.
The other way, widthwise, what is the line? Is it just?
Fifty feet total, you mean?
Yeah, is it, well, yeah. I mean, can you go the whole length of the property?
Yeah.
And not touch the first 25?
Right, no touch in the first 25 except for your dock.
And how much are you allowed for?
At this, eight feet.
Eight feet to the dock?
At this point, it's eight feet, yes.
And is there a base material that is called out for that eight feet? Or is it just whatever the owner wants to?
I mean, it's decking material. It's whatever.
Crush rock, gravel.
Whatever you want to do that is okay with the building official.
So the path itself, the dock itself, okay, it's beyond that?
It brings the other, yeah.
And erosion protection is asphalt? Asphalt?
Well, putting the asphalt, I don't think much got in.
Okay.
But he was going to throw it all in and I'm glad that we came by. Because we talked about that. And that's pretty much it for the photos. And those are the things that we saw that day. And in discussions, I will tell you that he told me the same thing. I mean, he and his wife elderly and he wanted to get, I mean, he wanted to make a beautiful place for her because she's not long for this world. And he wanted a place so that she could see the lake. And that's part of why this took, because you'll see, it's been a long time since I brought it forward, as I debated about whether to even move forward with this action. Until a former employee at Dune City filed a complaint about me at DEQ that I wasn't falling, moving forward on this action. So that's why we're here, is because that complaint was filed and I didn't want to get fined. I didn't want the city to get fined.
So question?
Go ahead.
So she filed an complaint about you, about this property? Or she filed an complaint in general? Because I'm trying to put that because someone files a complaint against you for something else, something you're contemplating and holding somebody accountable to, and now you penalize that person potentially.
She sent the same report that I'm giving you tonight to DEQ and said I was refusing to enforce it and asked them to do it because I wasn't.
Okay, so she sent the report to Claycombe to the state?
Yeah.
Got it.
Question on this picture, what is that? Is that?
That's a close-up of the asphalt where he was going to go.
How far is that asphalt pile from the water?
It just, it kind of dribbles down so that some of it was hanging over the water.
So is a potential for water to get up into that pile?
No, it's too high up. Well, I suppose we have a huge flood in this.
I was gonna say, this should.
Yeah, that would be my question.
It would be unlikely, yeah. Someone would have to actually put it in there. Or kick it in there. Or blow it in there. Thank you for this picture. So according to our code, I've lost the report. Mr. Claycombe meets the definition of responsible party as set forth in our code.
On page six, in your report.
Right, I know.
Okay.
Just got to get the other stuff out of the way. And is the person who causes the code violation to come into or continue in existence? We won't go into the details about who the hired hands were, or contractors. Chapter 154 says that the shoreline zone includes all lands within 50 feet measured horizontally from the ordinary high water line of all lakes and below. Generally, that a vegetation removal permit is required for removing vegetation from the shoreline zone. And that it can only be issued if necessary for the development of the water dependent or water-related uses, which is pretty vague.
Would it be such as putting in a pump? Maybe access to using related pump?
Right, the problem is we don't really have a good definition of water-related uses. So that leaves it open, but. And we're supposed to have, get an original inventory. Now, I did not do that, we talked about that. Because you're not supposed to be able to remove more than 25% of the original vegetation inventory. And I'm supposed to go to the property and count every stump and figure out how many trees that was and see how much of the vegetation was resumed, was removed as a result. And using that, he can take 25%. But it must be removed in conjunction with others and they have to have a permit to do it.
Do you mean that point of clarity is, I believe this home or land was developed in the 30s? Is there any grandfathering in the code or does the code come up to date when someone acquires the property? Because like, if these codes exist.
It starts all over again.
So it starts when the new owner or whomever.
Right.
So automatically comes up to date, okay. I'm sorry, what was the question?
So it's, I believe the home or property was developed in the 30s. I didn't know if there's a grandfathering clause in this like there is for other things on the lake. Or like when a new owner takes over, it comes up to the current code automatically. The grandfathering goes away. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't something in place like that that we were overlooking.
Well, it depends on the situation. I mean, if you're talking about building the house, yeah, that's pre-existing. The trees, it's easy to tell what was new and what wasn't. And like I said, some of the biggest, oldest trees were rotten and were going to fall on the house if they hadn't taken them out. So, you know, those were okay. My only concern was those that were removed right along the shoreline. And you can count, you can see them, so.
Do we know why the trees were not counted in regards to inventory?
Because I forgot that existed in when I was out there.
So then how do we? Well, and it's also something you would, if it was permitted, you would go take those pictures before it being.
Right, and we would know exactly which trees were going to be removed.
Part of that was planning mission action. If you were approved to do that, it would have been a formal action. Now it's more forensic, trying to figure out was it a restump and a new stump rep?
Section 141.002 of Dune City Code defines land disturbance as any activity that results in a change in existing soil cover, both vegetative and non-vegetative, and both temporary or permanent and/or the existing soil topography. Land disturbing activities include, but are not limited to, that should be the word demolition, construction, paving, clearing, and grubbing. And in section 141.003A, it states, "An erosion and sediment control plan. In all cases of land disturbance as defined in section 141.002, and prior to the commencement of any such land disturbance, the responsible party must submit an erosion and sediment control plan to the city for approval. The erosion and sediment control plan shall accompany any application for excavating and grading, for excavating and grading permit required by the city. Submission of the erosion and sediment control plan must be accompanied by the payment of the appropriate fee and amounts up with the council from time to time."
Which was not completely required?
No, no permits were applied for or issued until later. The specific erosion measures and best management practices shall be used, shall be selected, and it goes on to talk about how it is supposed to be determined, what needs to happen, erosion control measures, whether it's going to be installation of wattle or the black fencing or the orange fencing or whatever. And those were, had a permit been applied for, we would have had those things in place and then would feel far better about allowing the activity to go forward and not, and using measures that would keep the runoff from getting into the lake. If you were going to do a garden, there's the exception is on there too. If you were just going to do a small space and it wouldn't matter.
Two, just going to start again. So the rule says you can't touch anything, but if you're doing garden, it's okay. But the same erosion could occur because you're removing topsoil and actually over time. Is that, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, that the exception does allow.
Well, it's, it depends on the area.
Okay.
Okay, if it's less than 4,000 square feet and proposes to move less than 50 cubic yards, then it's, it is a smaller area. And it's fine as long as it does not disturb land within 100 horizontal, horizontal feet of the high water level of the lake. So it has to be more than 100 feet back from the lake if you were doing it. And it can't be on slopes greater than 15%. And it can't be on slopes greater than 15%. Those are the codes that have been violated other than the business license, which doesn't apply to Mr. Claycom. Then it goes on to tell you what I can do for things that are, for, this would be, chapter 36 addresses non-land use code violations. So like the business license, that's what I am able to do for non-land use things. And the section 155, 149, on page 10, is what applies when we're talking land use. And most of the things against Mr. Claycom at this time are all land use except for the erosion and sediment control. And that section reads, 155.1.4.9. A fine of not more than $1,000 shall be assessed for violations of the provisions of this chapter. Following a written notification by the city, violations of any provisions of this chapter shall be considered a separate offense for each day during which the violation continues. And so then it went into, I prepared the order that asks that certain things be done within a certain period of time. And an appeal was filed.
So number 14, so page 14, so it says 36, there's a list of items that, it says mannequin or a little word, or should, may take, did we follow the list? Notification of voluntary compliance?
No, because his, his isn't that code. His is land use code. That's a whole different model. This would be for those who couldn't get the business license.
So on page 10, I think it says 155.1.4.9, not more than $1,000 assessed violation, and each, each day is a separate offense. So page 11 and 6, the fine is $5,000, so it's presumed five day fine?
For five different violations.
Oh, I got it.
And that's what it is?
Trees and removal and it's different pieces of code. Okay.
Then I guess I have a question for Mr. Mayor. Do we ask all of our questions or we let Mr. Claycom testify? I mean, because staff reading should be a staff reading.
Yeah, I think our order would be people answering questions, you can follow up, and then it's the violation time.
We're kinda cutting that out of getting the.
But if there's a specific question you have, ask it during, yeah, so we're not trying to remember all the way back. If that helps. Okay. Anything else?
I don't see one violation listed. I guess then point of clarity on that, where are the five violations? Because you're hitting $5,000, so that would mean five violations.
The $5,000 is just a ballpark figure that's mostly based on the fact that he hasn't done anything to correct anything yet.
Okay.
And he told me direct, straight out, I'd rather be fined than fix it.
Okay. So we're just saying $5,000's arbitrary at this point?
It is arbitrary.
That's another. Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. Mr. Claycom, time is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just, before I start, what I was prepared for, just a few of the things that Jamie mentioned. You said that I had requested two or three RV parks. I don't ever remember that. I do remember requesting two because I have prepared two places for potential RV could be parked. And I recently paid $46,000 worth of electrical upgrades because of the home. I want to describe the home a little bit real quick for those of you who have not been there. I can look at the counter up there where you are, and this part of the counter represents a house that was built in 1937. Then in 1990, they built another house like that, and like that, and they connected the two with an enclosed hallway. And also an outside, a beautiful deck on the outside connects the two. But it's that whole house, two houses on one floor. So a lot of that had to be updated. I had a, I understand that we have a lot of power outages in Oregon, at least here. So I had a Generac installed. And I did not get the permit for that. The Dan of White House Electric came and got the permit for that, and then he came back and told me that I was turned down on putting in the two things for plugging in the RVs because somebody, planning commissioner of somebody, does not want an RV park in that area. I don't want a damn RV park either. I just like a place to park my motorhome. I hope I can go buy another one. My wife and I have had one for generations. I was hoping to get one and be able to take her for a ride someday, but I think we might be past that. So I don't remember saying three, I never wanted three. If I did, it was a mistake. I only wanted two. Regarding John DeVries, one of my neighbors right across court from me is Eric Ziegler, I think, yeah. And he's probably my best friend on that area. He's the first one, I was out on my front porch and saw him come walking down my driveway. I went and greeted him and hello, how are you? And we've become real close friends. He doesn't have any family in, at all, you know, here, and he's married to a young lady from another country. I can't think of the name. And they have an awesome little seven-year-old boy. And so that little boy, if it hadn't been for our caregiver, Mary, who came with us from California, fixing a beautiful Thanksgiving dinner, the last two Thanksgivings, and we've invited them to that. Otherwise, that little boy wouldn't understand. An American Thanksgiving. Anyway, I bring that up because there are, two things I want to mention about Eric Ziegler. I was walking up there one day and he had me in the court with John DeVries. And he introduced me to John. Hi, and John was real friendly to me and everything was great. Where do you live? I'm up the hill here with the, the house with the berm cage. Oh, okay. The next thing I know, John's put in a claim against me. And so I was driving down the street one day and he was out in Ford Way and I stopped and I said, John, I said, can we try again to be friends? I don't, I don't like not having my neighbors be a friend. Well, you, you know, you're doing bad things and so forth. And he says, you're a Marine. Marines aren't supposed to break the law. And I asked him, John, exactly how has your life changed since I've been here and what I've done on my property? Well, you're just breaking the law, blah, blah, you did. The more you talk to him, the worse it got. I kind of think John DeVries is just maybe about one bubble out of clump. And I thought that Jamie might have picked up on that when they, when she was interviewing him. Their house is sandwiched between Ford Way and Lake Drive. They have no lakefront property. So I can imagine where he might have a little bit of jealousy on my part since I've got three acres of lakefront property. So much for John DeVries. Oh, far about the Wes Wells truck being in front of John DeVries' house. John DeVries is halfway up that, our Ford Way is one-third of a mile long right off of 101. And DeVries is about halfway up there, up that. So there's no reason that Wes would have had his truck parked in front of John's house for anything he was doing for me. I've got three acres to park vehicles on. And anytime, you know, anybody was doing work for me for trees, they'd park the vehicles on my property. The docks, let's see. Oh, yeah, I heard from a lot of different people when I first bought that home, that you have to be really careful about those docks because they're grandfathered in, you couldn't build them that way anymore. My friend Joe, I understand, just had a dock put in, but, you know, he couldn't put in a wooden dock like I have today. And I was really concerned because I didn't know where to go to find out about re-registering. The information I got from the title company was that when I took over, it still had two years to go on the five-year lease, not lease, but whatever it is. And sure enough, pretty soon I get something from the state saying you need to renew, send pictures, blah, blah, blah. Boy, I did everything. I put pictures together, did it, all sent back to them. They sent me a letter, you're good for another five years, thank you for the way you did it, blah, blah, blah. Trying to be a good citizen. Backing up on that, one of the first things that I was informed about when I came here, I don't remember if it was a letter or all from Jamie or how it was, but how everybody needed to get fish screens on their intake. And so I said, you know, being, trying to be a good, brand-new citizen, I jumped right on that and I got Stu from Chuck's Plumbing came out, I think within a, at least within a week or so. He'd already dived down, taken care of that, let me know. And I said, okay, let Jamie know. He says, I'll take care of letting her know. I believe that's the way that happened. And I was informed that there were a lot of people who still did not have their fish screens besides me. Just trying to be a good citizen. My home that I just described to you is within inches of 50 feet from the edge of the water. So I would have had to have that fire pit built in my living room, I guess, if I went by the, the 50-foot rule there. And it's also only, let's see. Clint kind of estimated it for me. My home is only, you said, four or five feet, four or five feet above water level. You look across the lake and you see all the houses, including Joe's, I look right across at his house, they're up 100, I don't know, 150 feet above the level, looking out over the trees and brush and everything. I did not have that. When I bought that, when I took that possession of that property, I had this much vision of the lake. And yet I have three acres of lakefront property. I have the only natural sandy beach on Lake Wauwink. And now what I've done since I've taken it, the, all the ugly dead brush and everything, dangerous by the way, because it's all dead, fire hazard. And now I have this much view of Lake Wauwink because my property is right on the end of a peninsula. It's like if you use your finger, I've got the whole fingernail of Wauwink, of the peninsula. Oh, would I be correct in assuming, I asked Jamie, that this water thing with the culvert and so forth that you talked about, that that's probably the most serious thing that I've done?
No.
In all of the stuff that I've done?
No, I figure they're all violations.
Okay, well.
That you would have.
That one, okay. All of that, about what's been written up about me and that, that is totally false. Jamie noticed that and she said, who put that, what did we call it, a berm or whatever it is? In other words, it's somebody decades ago put that in. And anybody with, you know, looking at that seriously, all they'd had to do is go and look at the vegetation on that and know that that vegetation has been growing there for That, that pond, I call it frog pond, could not be seen from my home or the lake when I bought that property. Right outside my bedroom window was more this dead, ugly, fire hazard brush. And I had some guys working, doing property stuff there for me and said, God, take that, take that brush away. So they did. They took a bunch in here, they took six or eight feet, what was it? More brush. And I said, well, take some more. So they took some more, more brush. My God. But I still had a whole acre up there to go yet. And I said, well, take, take some more. It's ugly looking out my bedroom window. All of a sudden, I was gonna, I've got my own frog pond out there. You could not have seen that from the lake or from my house until I had them take that brush away. Jamie said something about, well, could you put in a culvert? No, I wouldn't want to put a culvert in there. I don't know what's been in that. That thing goes completely dry in the summertime. But with all this rain, it's completely full. And it's got, well, the kind of grass, whatever grows in those kind of places, that somebody originally put in there, I guess. But I had nothing to do with that other than exposing it to where nobody could ever see it until I had them take that brush out, both from the lake and from my house. The asphalt, when Jamie pointed that out to me, I first couldn't figure out why. She understood that I was trying to burn up a place that's right where the waves come in, right next to my dock. And the, between, then the, this kind of weather, the big waves come in and go up against that, and then when the watercraft go, of course, that's even worse. And it was eroding that, so yes, that was what I was trying to do to keep that from eroding. But when she mentioned, oh, no, asphalt has chemicals in it. You can't have that. Oh, my God. I don't know if Jamie remembers, but even while she was still on the property, I had Isaac removing that asphalt. And I thanked her. I said, God, that's, but that's true. That's not that far from my own water intake, my drinking water. I just never thought of it. And I was glad that Jamie brought that to my attention. And that was immediately taken care of. That's all I have about some of the things that Jamie just mentioned. Let's see.
Let me interrupt you for just a second.
Yes.
So the specific violations are that you did not get a permit that you cut trees closer to the water surface. Am I saying this correct? Closer, within 50 feet of the, the water's edge. Sounds like the asphalt's removed. How about cinder blocks? In the pictures, there's also cinder blocks.
Oh, those were, those were in there when I took over the property. In fact, I don't think I've quite got all of them out yet. There, I'm having. I'm having my guys doing it. But in addition to those, she didn't even mention, there's a lot of tires in there. Wouldn't that be bad?
I didn't see.
Huh?
I didn't notice them.
You didn't notice them? When I say a lot, there are a few of them. Somebody prior to me, I, I'm not sure if I have all of those out yet. Somebody prior to me put those in. And I did not put the cinder blocks, but I'm, I'm taking them out. Not, not as much. Do they cause a chemical problem also?
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend.
Okay. Well, I was taking them out because I thought they were ugly. I wouldn't want that. I want nice rocks. So I'm gradually getting that done, but you know, that's three acres of property and to get it all done.
Understood. So the appeal is specific to, can we run down that list again? It's, it's removal of vegetation and trees greater than 25% within 50 feet and 25 feet per code. So your appeal is really to those specific things. Did you get a permit to disturb any of the land along the waterfront? Did you remove more than 25% of the vegetative cover?
Considered by an erosion sediment control plan.
Did you get a sediment and erosion control plan approved? And anything else that says that's not related to the contract date? So I don't doubt you've done some great work, but at the same time, your appeal is specific to those violations. So I want to make sure that you address those or you have the opportunity to address those because that's all we're ruling on here tonight.
Well.
And the fire pit would be constructional within that 50 feet. Yeah, it disturbs more than 4,000 per people, disturbs the wires within that. And the erosion control plan.
Well, there's more than that, Your Honor, than just trees. I did not get permits on those.
Correct.
I, I, I took that, I think it was the same. I bought a home in Oakley, California, one time. Big, cut, nice, brand-new, custom home on an acre lot full of weeds. And of course, I went in and started removing those weeds. You know, I always tried to upgrade any property I had. And I took the same idea there. I didn't realize that I had to get a permit to take down, I don't know how many, a dozen or whatever we took, trees that were actually dangerous. They were leaning, dead. And Jamie even referred to that. And if I needed those then, I wish Jamie had told me. I, I, I paid for a permit every time I was told that I needed one. I've never denied paying for a permit.
So, and the, that's included in that, correct, Jamie? That was our emails listing all the required permits.
Right.
After your phone call, July of '22.
Is this conversation with Lana?
But that was part of these and dividing land. I don't think it was about streaming the oil or the brush. It was just the RV situation. And I think you're, I think it was through.
May I proceed?
Yeah, please.
Okay, I had been working for several weeks on the letter. I first of all, got a letter, my very first one, just a one-page letter, before I got all of these. And that one goes, "I was writing this letter from Tom Plakem to the Honorable Dune City Mayor Ed McGuire, Dune City Council Members, Dune City Planning Commission, and then copy to my attorney, Warner Allen, the law firm of Warner and Allen, blah, 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 in Portland. And then to my insurance agent, Michael Streets Insurance, Farmer's Insurance, because of possible liability. I have quite a high liability umbrella, but I try to avoid accidents before they happen." Okay, and it goes on, "Your Honor, Mayor McGuire, a few weeks ago, Pam Palmer, your Dune City Permit Administrator, personally delivered to me at my home a letter, copy attached, apparently written by Pam, typed by Pam, and signed by Pam, and delivered by Pam. But then Pam informed me that letter was ordered by Jamie Mills, your Dune City Administrator." More bad news, as she handed me that with a smile. Those were the words Pam said to me as she handed me that letter while greeting me with a kind of smile as if to be enjoying her political power over me and enjoying her pleasure of personally delivering that gotcha letter." I assume.
Stop, stop me a second. Do we have a copy of that?
Yeah.
Letter.
No, because that's a second violation. No, we're not this, what you're considering, it's not under consideration tonight.
I have been numerous copies. If I can give one to each of the... Mr. Mayor, would you like a copy of the letter that I'm about to read?
Did this initiate, I'm confused.
Yes.
This is, did this letter initiate the whole process in front of us?
No.
So what's this letter?
This, this letter is because he built something in the, in the right-of-way and.
Oh, sorry.
We're into the right of. So it's not involved in this right now. This, this came before that.
Okay.
So I can't deal with that today because that's such a major thing?
Well, you're, tonight you're appealing a separate action. We don't even have that yet, so you can't deal with us. None of us have any knowledge of that.
I'm going to read this letter, Your Honor.
Okay.
Tom, no, Mr. Plakem, Tom. Your violation of Dune City Codes again, dot, 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 dot. This time it is your fence on the roadway. You are in the right-of-way. And it has to be moved back behind your property line, your property line in caps. We are currently doing a bar ditch work. I want to find out what that's about, on all streets and roads in Dune City. We are unable to do this with your fence in the way. I'm extending the notice for one week to give you time to get a crew to move it. If it hasn't been taken care of, there are other ways to get it moved, in caps, dot, dot. Please take care of this ASAP and stop, capital letters, violating our codes. Respectfully, Pam Palmer, Dune City Fall Permit Department. That letter is the most unprofessional and somewhat disrespectful letter I've ever received or personally written to anybody after my 10 years as a bank officer, 20 years as a California insurance agent, and another 10 years as a California Chevron dealer among my various occupations during my 84-year lifetime. And you're telling me that this is not important to the council now?
No, I'm not telling you that at all. That's not what you're appealing tonight. So we need to stick to what we can take action on tonight.
But while I'm here, we're doing this, that's pretty damn important to me. As it turns out, I paid several thousand dollars to have this beautiful fence made, like Abe Lincoln-style fence. And then that's what this is about, that I'm supposed to.
But it appears it's in the roadway and it may be damaged when they grade those ditches for drainage.
It what?
They're going to grade those ditches alongside the road for drainage and your fence will be damaged.
Okay, well.
If I.
I was, I was going to appeal that because what will happen now is that the big trucks, she said some truck couldn't get turned around in there. Well, now the truck will be able to turn around in there. But we've had major rainfall this year. So it'll be really muddy. They'll make huge ruts in there.
That'll be the city's concern, but.
Well, it's our concern too because if do that on, on the property, even though it's a city, but it's ugly to us right there. And then they'll drag that mud onto the blacktop. Then all the neighbors will drive onto that, get mud on there, take it onto their, their driveway. So that fence would have avoided that. But now the fence is gone, those are all laying over there in a pile. They'll probably be burned. So you weren't even going to let me talk about that part. This is making me sound like a criminal, the way I've been treated on this. Your Honor, I'm not a damned outlaw and I don't accept being treated as such by little city clerks. In 1940, before anyone else in this room was born, I was born in Nebraska, making me a United States citizen and a cornhusker forever. At my age of 10, my dad committed suicide, which ended my childhood because I had to begin making money to help my mother support my two younger sisters. I enlisted in the Marine Corps at age 17, where I served on active duty for two years, which makes me a United States Marine forever. I will soon proudly celebrate 60 years as a California Freemason. I joined the Florence Elks Lodge about three months ago. None of those entities accept outlaws into their memberships. Two years ago this month, I became a proud resident of Dune City, where I have been treated as an outlaw and must end it now. I've got more, but I don't think you want to hear it.
Thank you. So for me to handle questions, I have a whole bunch of procedural questions just to learn some that, just want to understand process stuff. Is it now time to ask questions? Or we have rebuttal first, I guess?
Well, let's see.
From a, from a hearing perspective? Yeah. Do you have anything you want to add?
Um, no, I do not. Well, yes, I do. Mr. Plakem?
Yes, ma'am.
If you want to get that $400 deposit back, you need to ask them on the record to get it back.
I, I don't understand what it's for. I've still got, isn't, that's supposed to be a deposit on the $5,000 or $6,000 you're charging me?
No, it's a deposit to cover the costs of the appeal and you can ask to have that returned. But I want to make sure that you don't forget to ask to do that because if you don't ask, they can't give it back.
But we, I'm not even sure, I still don't understand what the $400 is for. I thought it was a deposit on, I, I don't know.
It is a deposit.
I wish I had, I wish I had my attorney with me right now.
I do too. And the cost of the appeal, the additional records, copies, pictures, that sort of thing, right? Additional direct costs, the city bears?
Right.
Okay.
I'm paying for all of this.
Well, those are the costs associated with this.
The total for the violation.
But the appeal.
The violation. There's an additional deposit required.
Right.
About that.
If you rule in his favor or fine in his favor, he would like to have the money back. But he has to ask for it. I can't. And I want to make sure he does so that it's on the record.
Okay.
But why only the 400? What about all the $5,000 or $6,000?
That'll be up to them to decide.
And that's what your appeal tonight is for. You're really appealing the $5,000 suggested fine and then the administrative cost is the city's expenditure, the effort to take the pictures, make the site visits, and write the reports and do the follow-up. So.
The 400 applies for.
Only the appeal, for the appeal itself, like right now. That's an additional cost for tonight's appeal.
Yeah.
And the code requires your request.
400 doesn't apply.
No, no, in addition. Your Honor, can I say one thing about this right now? If I have failed because I didn't know a permit was due, I'd love to have all of you come out here and look at it. I would rather, I will, I'd rather pay $10,000 if we could come up with that many permits that I owe than pay $5,000 as a fine, making me a criminal. I will not pay it in fine.
You're not a criminal, that's not a criminal offense. It's civil for violating the land use code. And I think by your own admission, you did violate some of the land use code by removing trees without a permit and installing sidewalk and a fire pit too close to the waterline.
Well, we're not going to get anywhere. I'm going to.
We're going to take it slow.
Paying a, paying a fine, it's, it's like I did something wrong and I didn't. I didn't purposely do anything wrong. I'm still willing to pay. If you can turn those into permits, I'll do that. I'll pay double what that is. But I won't do it for fines because I'm not, you know, I'm not a criminal.
Let me ask you a question. Are you going to request your $400 back for tonight's appeal?
Yes.
I, I don't still understand it, my own advice.
My advice to you is just say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. For the record.
Yay.
So we have a couple of choices here. This is the, we're sort of at D, the last step of the back and forth. So this is where the council can ask questions and we'll close the public hearing. And then I have some suggestions depending on how the questions and answers go. So you want to start at your end since there's a lot of questions.
Did you want over there?
Well, it's just, I'm very procedural.
No, no.
That's part of everything.
And we don't do this very often. So we bubble through it every, every once in a while.
So I want to make sure, I heard at one point, Jamie, you said that you were conflicted not even bringing anything forward, but this employee, former employee.
Thank you.
Threatened to file charges or file a complaint.
Did file a complaint.
Did file a complaint.
Did file a complaint.
Okay, and then that initiated then to change your mind and file these.
Thank you.
We're literally between a rock and a wet place here with the state saying you have to enforce this because of erosion, potential for water quality issues, right? With runoff and.
But I don't think the state said that. The state deferred.
No, it's state law.
Well, we're obligated to do that, right?
To go first.
Yes.
Because that's, I believe we heard. Okay, and then there's a permit for RV parking that is denied. What's that mean and is there a copy of that? So I don't understand why that is.
There was no permit for RV.
There was no discussion about what you could and couldn't do. Yeah, no, I can't.
Okay. That was with the electrician that came to get the permit for all of that work. That included two of those to be installed. And then I was told those were turned down because a neighbor man's name did not want a damn RV park up there. And I don't want a damn RV park either. I just want to place the park in my own motorhome and a friend to come.
Okay, let me, I already covered why it took so long. And then there's a page two, paragraph four, so it's an exception for fire protection purposes isn't covered under this code? How do we know? So that sounds like you can do it and the code doesn't apply if you deem it a fire hazard, right? The way it's written, I've read that a thousand times and it goes, it gives me authority. So how do we decipher when the code, when it says the code doesn't apply if it's fire protection purposes and someone's saying it is? How do we decipher if it is or is not? Because it doesn't say you must get a permit and then have the county commission come out. It just says the exception is fire protection purposes. So how's that work?
Where are you at, Joe?
Um, it's page two, paragraph four. Someone wants to start with the fire hazard. It talks about Dune City land codes do not allow.
Oh, got you.
But it says, blah, 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 except for fire protection. And we're period, corridor? Corridor, yeah. So it's kind of a weird statement because it gives, the meaning is it's implied that the owner has the discretion if they deem it a fire hazard. And that's some of the brush, right? I'm just taking what the words mean to me and asking because that, I would have read that as, oh, it's my own discretion to do that. So I don't know if we have clarity or.
I don't have clarity on that. I mean, in my mind, it meant that if it's fire, you can take it down. If it's burning, you can take it down.
Well, no, it says fire protection. So that means proactive engagement. At the beginning, this is how I interpreted it. Maybe this is written badly because it's, we could all interpret it as something.
There's a lot of ways to interpret it, right? The other is when you apply for a permit in a repairing area and you do the inventory and you think it is a fire hazard for a leaning tree, a rotten tree, or whatever. There are a lot of things that can be removed. There are a lot of things that can be removed.
Right.
Right.
Without any other action because they're deemed.
But the boss has to be put into play.
The trigger is to ask for a permit so that we can.
If your landscaper would have done it, brought it in and said, look at all these that are marked. These are all either bog and dusted, rotten, dead, like whatever. They don't count for that twenty-five percent.
Right. But again, in how this is stated.
Right.
That you have the, the meaning, the owner has the discretion to remove it if they think it's a fire hazard. Because it says the code does not apply. So that's just one of the clarity. And then again, it's back to this whole requesting RV, it's two, page two, paragraph six. It's just the zipper a few times about asking for applications of RV parks and stuff. I just don't get what the ask is. The little citation of trees, brush, repair, and nothing to do with that. But we seem to have it in here a few times.
The original request, it was included in the original request. Oh, you're right.
It has no.
There's no violation.
And there's no, no reason why it should be in here. My, come in, so page three, paragraph one. So, so this is a hard one because I looked at the aerial photo that we're referring to that doesn't have a date. And we're saying it's wetlands, which I don't think anyone disagrees. But this whole culvert, no one does a culvert, whether it's prior or not. So requesting to put a culvert back in or not, I get, I'm just confused by some of this stuff because there's no proof. It's not like we have aerial photos showing a culvert that existed and there's violations. That could be a natural pond by rainfall.
Oh, look at it.
It, it's out, yeah. So again, I'm just kind of going through procedural stuff of what we're stating as violations, but.
But that's not.
He's not cited by the state, but that, the state's actually.
Right. No, I get it, but it's still in this agreement. So if it wasn't a problem with the city, it shouldn't be in this according to stuff like this, right? We only put things that are matter to the case, but that's cited in here as an issue. Again, I'm just going through questions, I'll make it really quick. Then page three, paragraph three. Three. So, so that refers to a letter received by Christine Littkey? And why are we quoting something that's not disclosed to us? If there was a letter sent in to Dune City that's a complaint, I believe for our charter or whatever, that's supposed to be disclosed in this? Because we're referring and we're quoting stuff.
Yeah, we have.
That we have no proof on.
There's a difference.
Right. That's the one, one of the divides.
Right.
So again, just, do we have this letter that was sent in? And what they were complaining about? Because again, we're referring to stuff. And I just don't think.
It's attached as an exhibit.
Say again?
It's attached as an exhibit.
I don't see the one from the Littkey.
Oh, from Littkey.
The divides are in there. But I have some more questions on that one that we're referring.
I have a copy of it.
Do I get a copy of that also? Can I talk about?
Yeah, well, saying you disclosed it or you wrote it. Yeah, whatever, he may. And then we're talking about, again, the three, again, these are things we're quoting in this. There are three recreational legal goals and people were living in it. Again, a lot of this, I mean, is, where's approved? We can't just go, oh, yeah, people are living there because, again, I see a lot of campers parked and a lot of motorhome buses parked on people's private land within Dune City. We don't see them running around, but why that? We don't even know if people were living in there, but we're stating it. I just don't like stating things as fact when we can't back it up. And again, this is all procedural.
Your Honor, before we get away from that Littkey one, can I say something about that?
Sure.
Okay. I was surprised to see that she had put in, I guess, a complaint. We had been real good friends, she's right next door. She's been to our house several times for parties and so forth. And last, I don't know, five or six months ago, one of her trees big limb fell across onto my property, blocking my driveway, kicking down the wires, bringing that hot power for a while. And I paid to have that all taken out and she didn't have the money. There was that tree, it was still a big tree there, dead. And she didn't have the money to pay to have that taken down. So I said, will you give me permission to have it taken down? And I had Wes Wells come out, take that down for a thousand dollars at my own expense. She didn't thank me or give me anything. And I thought we'd been friends. But prior to that, you can only imagine, if you were to see it now, you could never imagine going from my house down to the dock. It was a little narrow path, dirt path like this. If you walked through, you'd get rubbed on each side with brush. And my realtor, Tony Wells, who handled the deal of sale, sale of that house, came up because I, he, they never did show me the property line to him. It was stated in the title or whatever it was that they were to stake all the places and they had not been. So he came out one day thinking we'd go and, here's my path going down to the dock. And then her house, I don't even know, we couldn't even see her house from there. But right down by the dock, going in, there's a thing like this, you could actually crawl in through it and go back in there. And I, I wasn't going in there with him. And he came out, back out and he was a little spooked by it. And they said, yeah, I didn't get very far, but he said, I got in there and there was a little table and two little chairs and a hangman's noose sitting there. And, okay, so the next day I went in trying that, thinking I wanted to get to the property. Well, it turns out it was, God, another fifty, a hundred yards or something to her proper, to the property line. So I had guys taking that brush out, a former insurance agent. I saw a potential fire hazard there. And you're trained to look for potential fire hazards and try to prevent them before they happen. So my guys had already taken out some of that and I thought they'd stopped because they've gone the property line. And about that time, Christine came over and said, Tom, are you going to build a house here? I said, Christine, I'm eighty-two years old, that was two years ago. I don't know what the hell I'm going to do. I've never had a piece of property like this. And so then I looked over towards her house and right up almost against her house was this huge pile of dead brush. I said, Christine, why in the hell do you have that big pile of dead brush right up against your house? On your property? He said, Tom, that is not my property. That's your property. My house is only three feet from your property line, from our property line. That wire fence, and you go over to that wire fence, it may be three feet here, but then it kind of goes like, it gets down to about two feet. And at one point, I think it was Tony Wells was looking on his phone and getting at the aerial view. And he was showing me the property line. I said, well, what's that hanging out over my property line? He said, that's her roof. Her roof is actually hanging out over the property line, going to my property. So I was, like I say, being a former insurance agent for twenty years makes me trained to look for fire hazards. And that was, that was, if a kid's getting there playing with matches, lightning, somebody with a chainsaw, whatever, started a fire there, her house would have been gone, probably mine, and most of our forest, so they hold into that.
So that, page four, number three, it goes to the device. Jamie wrote an interpretation in a verbal discussion in the complaint. It's much shorter form, but if we take a statement, shouldn't that be procedurally? We can't write that someone said this because we don't know what they actually said. That should have been a written statement or just straight to, because they're finding a fact, it's not a fact. Here's a, yeah, a hundred percent. And so we're saying, we're speaking on behalf, investigator's speaking on behalf of the device. But I don't see how that's possible because it's not straight from them. So it would have been great to see actual rate complaint where they say these same exact words because we did have a citizen complain that some of our transcribe, or transcriptions weren't accurate. And so this would come in at me is, if we're going to quote it in a document like this, we should have it written from the person giving the statement, not.
She's making the copies right now.
So the statement from the device?
No, the statement from the letter.
Littkey.
No, the letter from Tom. That's, this refers to the letter that Tom wrote.
Yes, but it's the.
This is Littkey. Littkey.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, it just goes on, you know, that the, the device are making alleged factual statements, but they're not engineers. I don't think, I just quit that because we're taking a lot of, what they're saying is fact, that it was causing great harm or, you know, they believe the damage being done substantial enough could cause damage. Again, these aren't sticking to facts, they're opinions by uneducated as people, but technically not educated as engineers or these land survey things that we've been talking about. That one I skipped because it doesn't include. So. So PG, it's number thirteen. You know, I see that we're saying, this is kind of contradictory, you know, removal of the rock path benches, fire pit would likely result in greater erosion up to the lake. Do we have the city have an impact on that? Because we're making the statement. So we're saying we're going to let it stay, we're going to let it deteriorate just because it may cause more impact to remove it. And I just scratched my head on that because that is kind of like illogical statement. Such as it's on the surface and I don't know if it is. But why would we let something stay? We're saying it's just going to erode and break up, which would cause greater risk. I believe in erosion and everything else. So just a question I had on that one.
Maybe that reverse of the removal, if we were to ask.
That means I would have to tear up all that sidewalk and all that stuff and it would cause a great deal of erosion into the lake.
Right.
So if it was to be disturbed.
Right. We're supposed to let them fail instead of remove it, let it fail and go away. It's just.
But I think it's to remain in place with instructions not to replace. As if we're not permitting a replacement, if it stays for fifty years undisturbed, fine.
Right.
That fails.
But if it's not being grandfathered in, it's acceptable. And I agree that potential, the removal potentially costs more than.
But we're not. Educated, we're not engineering, that's how I don't think, I'm not.
I am.
I am too. I'm a water engineer too.
Survey stuff. Um, let's see. Skipping over all the other ones. And then.
Regarding, Your Honor, was that? I just came back from the bathroom. Was that regarding possible erosion of all my three acres of, like, front? Is that what we're just talking about?
No, comment specific to one of the comments in here.
Could I just make one comment about the potential erosion? Yes, I, I, dead stuff I cut out, but everything that was living, I left there. And now, I mean, that's been months ago, maybe a year ago. And now all the stuff that is growing back is just a growing rate. And it's the same idea with the trees. I've been told by tree experts that so many trees on my property were all right together, like two or three together. And that's unhealthy for the trees. And I don't believe I have any of those left. They're all single trees, all in perfect distance from each other and all growing really well. And the same, same idea on the bank. My friend Clint does some stuff for me. And he said in, when he was in Alaska, they lay, I don't know what it's called, but you see it on the highways when they've got an embankment going down, they have these rolls of stuff, maybe every few feet.
Straw walls, yeah. Straw walls.
Okay. And he said, Tom, I've laid down hundreds of thousands of feet on that in Alaska. And if that was that, it's what we need, he'll help do that or whatever. He can advise, you know? I'm not a, I'm not an erosion expert, but I'll do whatever it takes on that.
All right. Then I have page ten, three, four, five, six, seven. But, Ms. Moore, as a general question, is I live on Woehe Lake and live on property that was cleared well before my time, just for the record. All the way down to within three feet of the shoreline. And as I peer out my window, I see a lot of properties that are completely cleared and have never had to regrow back to the original, like we're putting here. So I have a hard time when government puts a, what is inconsistent in what they make citizens do. So all the other citizens on the lake that are obviously cleared, because some is green grass and I didn't.
There are many residents around this lake that have paid tens of thousands of dollars for the fines they've received for clearing down.
Right. But my point is, you've put control measures that you have to do a plan, you have to replant, you have to let the vegetation grow back.
I did, but they didn't before. That's why they changed the code to have that as an option.
Okay. So we're saying people are grandfathered in from the old days where they've cleared all their property. They paid ten thousand dollars and they've never had to do these things that are being asked.
Right.
Okay. And then just the cost, we kind of covered that, you know, what the five thousand dollars means. Just a city council member would like to see specifically why five thousand dollars and then what the fifteen hundred and twenty-seven dollars equals. Our accounting staples, pad for time, just what, it'd be nice to see what goes into these, so you know.
I have.
Yeah.
I have.
Your Honor, did I just understand from that last?
And it would be the city's cost, not just for the person. It would be the city's cost for hours.
Right. Okay.
Your Honor, did I just understand from this last conversation between Joe and Jamie that I could pay ten thousand dollars right now and sort of go away?
No.
No. No, that is not what you understood.
That's right.
It could have been worse, is the point I was trying to make. We've got an outstanding fine of eighty thousand dollars against somebody in Dune City. And to me, that is absurd, absolutely absurd. So it was not unusual. It is not unusual to see ten thousand dollar fines in the past for this sort of thing. As a matter of fact, I know of one, he even appealed it and lost the appeal, but, and it was ten thousand dollars. And I see a straight request for me, for my house.
But to this day, no one's, has anyone had to follow these things about letting a plant grow back up, return? Because I've literally, everyone I see on.
It's required. If you get the erosion sediment control plan, whatever's in that plan is required. And that's supposed to be done, doesn't have to be done by an expert, but it's supposed to be done by an expert, especially the bigger the project.
Right.
And then the expert, this is the person who got a license to do this in the state of Oregon.
Right.
So he's doing, he or she is doing whatever they're supposed to be doing.
So then are we going after all these, potentially looking at all these properties that don't have any of the regrowth occurring and seeing do they fall under this grandfather or not? It's hard because one thing I.
No, because I don't have time to go through two, seven hundred and forty properties one by one.
Another question, I think it's a, what code were you under when it was done and what did that plan say? The plans will be consistent, depending on slopes and the vegetation and the owner and the person that does the plan too. So without a plan, this is the default. The code says you got to replant and put it back.
Right.
If you had a plan upfront, you could have described what was going to be removed locally, you know, what was dead, what was dying, what was in harm's way, what represented a hazard. That's the problem we have is without any of that, this is what the current code says. And it's up to us to decide if you want to lower it or adjust it.
Right.
And it's a little late to reword the letter. You're right, there's a lot of extemporaneous.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure we're applying the same rules to everyone.
I think it's the same rule, but there is inconsistencies over time, right? Every time the mayor and the council change and.
Something changes.
The applicants change.
Subjectal.
Yeah, it is.
Okay. So my questions.
I had a guy that worked in a land, you know, before she retired. And, I mean, she knew what she was doing. So I don't doubt that she tried to answer the questions that she had at the time. And obviously there was some spoke here.
Right. Okay. Smoza?
I'm going. I'm good. He's asked some of those questions. Thank you, come on, I didn't have to speak.
Susan.
I'm good.
You're good, huh? Any other questions?
Just a quick question. What's the situation on the RV lots? Is it, has he applied for?
No.
No.
He has not applied. He would not be, I mean, it would have to, he would have to go to the planning commission and ask permission.
Let's ask that question. So did you want RV spaces to rent or you wanted an RV space to park your RV and have a space for a friend to visit?
I'm hoping to get a, just a RV. And then I've got friends that have RVs that I'd like to be able to come and.
So not for rent, this is for friends to come and plug in, they come to visit.
Uh, correct. And I, uh, the RVs I won't have for, I don't know if I should even go in this for the dumping. There's just a mile away is a place, way out there.
Good, thank you.
I guess, why are we concluding the RV space with the actual violation here? Because they have absolute.
It was part of the original question, and I think it was Joe brought it. It's in the letter, but yes, it's not.
So it's not one of the violations, so it's a question.
Right.
So it shouldn't be in there, just for housekeeping.
Yeah, so table that RVs.
So I can or cannot get approval on that tonight?
You need to take that with staff at a later date.
Okay.
Um, because yeah, there's no, there's no appeal of anything because you didn't permit anything. There's no appeal to that, so let's just leave that alone right now.
Okay, so I go back to Jamie on that later.
Anything else? Chris?
But I can let Jamie come and park her motor home there if you want.
Uh, just a couple of clarified questions.
So I gotta find a few wherever you can.
Yeah. How far back did you clear the brush from your house?
I'm sorry?
How far back did you clear the brush from your house just pure?
How far back from the water edge?
No, no, you, you said it was a fire concern, right? You were concerned with fire, so.
My entire three acres was an absolute jungle. The only thing was the driveway coming in, the house. And this little dirt path going down to the dock and the rest of it was jungle. And all three acres now are still longer jungle. I have.
Oh, you cleared your entire acreage?
Yes.
And why did you cut down the trees?
Because they were, well, several reasons. Some were dead, leaning like this ready to fall, dangerous, fire hazard, can fall on somebody. And Jamie even witnessed that. And I should have, uh, open seat others.
But those weren't the one.
Oh, because a lot of them were together. Jamie, do you remember when I took you out behind, remember I have two garages? One's a nice real new garage, another one's old and I still need, do work on. But back right behind that, apparently when they built that garage, nineteen thirty-seven or whatever. Uh, they had graded out around to where that garage, and then right behind it was a clump of three huge trees. But the, it had been graded out around them like this, so all three of them could so easily fall. Because their root system was basically was dug out around it. And I think when we had already done that, that we had already taken down the three trees. And I showed it to Jamie, look, here's an example, you see, and she said, oh yeah, that makes sense if I remember right. You remember that?
Somewhere along that.
Something. That, that's an, was another example. There were three pretty good sized trees, but they're all right together. Now all the trees on my property, you look and there's no, no brush, dead brush or anything.
I don't know that your question got answered.
He did.
Did it?
What?
Because I guess my interpretation of your question was is how far did you clear away from the house? Clear the brush away from your house?
The whole three acres.
The whole, the whole three acres.
Yeah, I thought I said.
How far, how far is the house from the lake?
About fifty feet. And only about. Four, four or five feet above lake level. So I couldn't see out over the brush like Joe can from his house because his is way up high. Did I, did I answer?
You didn't.
Yeah. Rick, you got questions?
Thank you for asking good questions.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of unclear as to. How we as a council rule on something that, um, and I guess maybe I'm only seeing potentially three violations that were, should truly be addressed. And this is my thoughts on this. And, um, I don't know how we come to the conclusion of what, what the fines or penalties might be. If this is the case, or if we have to go off of what is listed here.
Nope, he's appealing that and the council has broad authority to adjust from, from saying it stands to make it a dollar, to make it go away. Correct? So that's about, I mean, that's a really good question. And this council has never had an appeal as this body. So.
And I, I guess one question I've got for you is. I understand Mrs. Mills told you you needed to get some permits and you needed to apply for permits. Is that correct?
I did tell him that.
Okay. Um, at, at that point, why did you not comply with requesting the paperwork or requesting the permits?
Okay, allow me to answer that. Can I clarify my last answer to you when I, you asked, how far did you go? I cleared my entire three acres.
Okay.
Now, but yeah, but I want to clarify that with the exception of on the property line next to Christine Litkey. And then my other neighbor, another Eric, I have two Eric's.
I don't.
On that, I left some of that for privacy, okay?
I don't think that has any bearing on, on the part that's in question here for, for the violation of a lake. So.
Okay.
My question is.
Now, this question is.
Is why did you not comply with the requests to get permits? And to follow the sediment control erosion plans and things of that nature?
I, I was totally oblivious to what I needed. I even, the very first time Jamie Mills and I ever connected at all was by telephone. And I don't remember exactly what all, I called her, I believe, and asked if she could come out. Even, you know, if she was too busy, I think something along this line, you know, during the business hours, you know, come out after hours, we can have a drink together or something. And I think I finally got it down to her favorite was whiskey. That's, and I said, I got some really good whiskey. And anyway, I, I asked her, can you come out and look and show me what I need, whatever, and. I don't know, it, I didn't, I didn't have any guidance. And I, I was, I hadn't, didn't have the knowledge. If, if there's a way now that you guys can all say, Tom, you should have gotten permit to do this, you should have got to do this, and you tell me exactly what I need. I'll write you a damn check for every one of them. I've done it. I've paid thousands, I think several thousand dollars in permits here so far. It's not that I try to avoid the permits and paying them. I just don't know what. I've never, I've never had a piece of property like this. All I'm trying to do is improve it, and I have.
I, I guess you made the comments that you took down a bunch of trees and stuff on a piece of garbage in California that you ended up having to pay fines on, so.
Wait, I did what?
He said you cleared the land in Oakland and incurred the wrath of Oakland.
Yeah.
I'm with Rich, you might have learned the lesson.
Oakley? I've lived in, oh, I said Oakley.
Oakley.
Okay.
No, I didn't say I took down trees. I said.
Right.
Oh, I take that, well, I took down trees also because my house is built in the middle of an almond orchard, but those trees were all dying. I hated it because I love almonds. Yeah, I did take down those trees. But I didn't tell you that. I was just telling you I took out all the weeds there. Did I, did I clarify that?
And you were cited by Oakley, California.
Absolutely not. No, Oakley.
I guess I.
No, Oakley.
Two, you told us that at the beginning of this, that you had the same situation in California, removed brush and then got sideways with the city of Oakley, California.
I didn't say anything about getting, I don't know where that came from. I said, I had an acre lot. I had an acre lot that I bought.
That's okay, we'll move on.
That was full of weeds. I pulled the weeds out.
The follow up question from Rich, though.
Did you have to say that?
You just.
No.
You just said, when did you make this call to city hall to come out and look at your property? Was this before everything started, during it was going on or after it ended?
I, I, I think I've been working on that house from day one. And I don't think exactly how, it, I don't think it was very long after I had moved in there.
So that's.
Jamie remembers that conversation or not? We had a real nice conversation.
The question is, at what point, not referring to when you and Jamie conversated or when Jamie visited. At what point? Was it before you took out trees and vegetation, after you had done it, or that's what the question is, is as to give us a timeline as to when.
Thank you for clarifying that, Melissa. I can't tell you that for sure because I just, when I saw this, I started working right away. It was probably, I doubt if any were taken down before that conversation because I think that was pretty early in my, December thirty-first will be the two week anniversary we lived there. So I'm trying to put that into perspective. I don't know if I'd taken down any trees prior to that or not. I can't tell you for absolute sure, but I don't think so yet. For one reason, uh, it's really hard to find good people here to work. And when you do, I finally got people coming because they found out Tom Placo pays cash and pays immediately and pays well. But it took a while to get people out, so I can't answer that for sure.
So maybe a more broad clarification, from the time that you moved in, the day you moved into this and took possession of this house? Are you saying that you started working in the outside vegetation and improvements of your three acres before you obtained any guidance from the city?
Uh, did I get any? No, I think I got permits for something else. Was it something to do with the septic tank?
Right, but you, so you made a comment to Rich and you said that I had this phone call and I was asking for help and I didn't get help. That's important timing of when that request came in. Because what if we, if you ask for help and we didn't respond to that before, makes a big difference. Or if you're doing it in the middle and you already started cutting stuff down or you did it at the end. And so that's what we're trying.
And I can't answer that for absolute certain because I, from day one, I envisioned what I wanted, but that didn't mean I had it done because it's hard to find workers. Once, it took me a while to even get people coming out, so.
And then Jamie, do you remember this call by James and know who Oakley went by for the couple of years?
No, I don't. Um, I do know that Lonnie sent him that email.
Yeah, we have that in here. That's.
Of what year?
Or, sorry, July, July of twenty-two.
I have a question about that email. You got that email back, did you, did you pull up the zoning and code link that was in that email? The bottom of that email is a link, Dune City zoning codes.
You know, I read through every one of these and I thought, who the hell is Lonnie? I don't remember anything about that. There's so much going on. And besides, you know, I'm not only dealing with this, I'm dealing with, my wife has hospice people coming now, you know, she's on hospice. I don't know, he's only six years, uh, when they took over minimum. And myself with cancer. And my cancer's kicked up, so, uh, you're dealing with a, a soon to be widower, dead man walking. And I'm still dealing with this. So all the medical things and all the stuff dealing with people and, and getting the electrical done and on and on and on. Lonnie's question, I just can't answer.
So there's more of a yes or no, so you don't remember ever looking up the city codes? It's a yes or no statement?
Uh, no, I wouldn't even know where to look.
You what? I'm sorry, what?
This Lonnie advised that I.
Yeah.
Just wait, excuse me, just a minute ago, you had referred that you didn't what? What was your last part of your sentence? You kind of, your, your voice level went decline.
He said he wouldn't know where to look.
So he wouldn't know where to look, okay.
Yeah, all that stuff's over my head. I've never dealt with any of this.
All right.
I did, just off the record, I did at one time serve on a board, Oakley Water Board District for several years. And we were dealing with millions of dollars there. We were in the process of building a new plant and so forth. So I was in one of your positions at one time, so I understand, you know, what you guys are going through. I've been there and done that.
Mr. Placo, you are, you are stating that you did receive this email from Lonnie Norono in regards, because your question back to us, you did not know who she was. Is that correct?
I kind of do now, it's coming back, but I have forgotten. She's still with us?
No.
Okay.
Do you, did you receive this email?
If I was at home and get my file out, I could tell you yes or no for sure.
She's asking, do you right now remember receiving this email?
I do not remember it right now, but if I did get that, I've, I've got it filed. All that kind of stuff, I got a, uh, Dune City over, I put that stuff there. I can call my caregiver and ask for the electric.
Okay.
So. Are we ready to close the public hearing?
All right.
Just a question. Mr. Placo, neither a banker, said for ten years?
Uh, about ten years banker.
What did you do for the bank?
Uh, I started out as a bank teller. A young lady, older than me, she had children, but I was newly married. And she started training me to be a bank teller. And she's, okay, now when you get a transaction, you take, you put the debit on the bottom and the credit on the top.
Ten years down the road, what, how were you when you left?
Okay, let me finish that first. I said, what's the debit? What's the credit? And she's, oh, we're starting from scratch. And down the road, another year or two, I became an operations officer. I was never a manager, but I was an operations officer in several different branches, actually several different banks. I'd go from one bank to another. It was a very educational thing for me.
All right. Thanks. So I'm gonna close the public hearing. So.
For the record, Tom.
Pardon me?
For the record, what time?
A long time later, eight, oh, eight, I'm sorry, scratch that, eight oh eight PM. We're right on track. So we have two obvious choices. If the council's comfortable, the council can decide they want to define stands, you want to justify. Or we could continue this if you feel the need to make a field trip, because there is a question about it, like what does this really look like? We've never done this before and does the, does the fine fit the crime, if you will? Go see what's been disturbed beyond the pictures. I mean, walk out there if we need to walk out there and look at.
Oh, this is a picture I counted in the pile for two thousand and four.
Okay.
Two thousand and four.
Oh, from way back?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's up to you guys, if you would like to schedule a field trip and somebody wants to count stumps and see what, see it firsthand? Or if you're, you're heard enough and it's comfortable.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm working, you have, we've got the pictures.
Yeah. All right. So anybody, this is council deliberation, so you can say let it stand, you can say it, I think it should be twice as much, but it's what it is. Or I think it should be fifty bucks. bucks, or. And I had the original question, let me turn it real quick, page 10 is where it says, the order of correction action, so 1 and 2 don't apply, those are business licenses for two contractors involved, 3 and 4 are debated, within 10 days, get the erosion and sediment control plan submitted, pay the fees, once a plan is approved, implement that plan. So that is going to identify what needs to be re-vegetated, how many, what sort of species, how many of those, and then it goes on to say, I think the next one is maintain it for two years. So from, from an engineering and erosion perspective, which I happen to be an admitted expert in certain places, I would say, no matter what, that should be enforced. So, the, literally, it goes to that, all, hang on a second, all the items, but I feel pretty strongly that you need to protect that water's edge, make sure there's no asphalt, cinder blocks, tires, debris, or anything, that, that should be cleaned up, and then whatever's appropriate to re-vegetate, and that would be an expert makes that signal, right, so that does this work.
Is there checkpoints within that two years?
No, it just says pictures.
No, that would be, that, that could be a condition, I mean, that's part of an appeal, you could say, I'm good with that, and I want to see it every six months, or, I mean, you can have a discussion there, this is deliberation, so, because it goes to number six and seven, are you going to adjust ones for the other on this plan to see? But I feel pretty strongly about erosion protection and sediment control, for everybody stringing likewise, so.
I feel strongly about that too, Your Honor.
Thank you.
If you can advise me.
Oh, hang on, who you go to? Who you go? Chris, you have a question?
I was just going back to the basics, which was just pointing like three-day issues, like, you cleared a lot of trees.
Yeah.
Some of those, you could argue were, were safety, but you clearly exceeded that. The brush, clearly exceeded the fire.
Right, and the 25 feet within the water line, you can't remove anything.
And, and the fire pit in the path are, are pretty blatant, just disregarding the zoning. The hard part is, it's a dog, it's arbitrary, and that's, that's not okay.
Well, and it's a placeholder, right, you can say, you need to spend that much on re-vegetation, or whatever you think is appropriate. I mean, this isn't a cheap project, right, it's clear, you've spent a lot of money on the property building sidewalk, and fire pit, and clearing, and, so, that can be part of that discussion, what, what you think the right number is, that's why I offer a field trip, if it helped to see it in person to get.
And I just want to add, Chris, there are no permits either, so.
Of course.
Kind of like a wash.
But I want to read what the penalty, because I want to emphasize a point. It says a fine of not more than $1,000 shall be assessed for violations of the provisions of this check, or so, for each incident, it's, you can go up to $1,000. But it also says, it's a separate offense for each day the violation continues. So it could be a lot more than what it is if they, if we actually did it day by day by day. We did this in HOA that we had that was a lot larger than Dune City, and people, we did, we'd really rack up large amounts because of violations every day they didn't do it. And it seems to me she's come up, though, an arbitrary number, it's not assessed for every single day, because otherwise it'd be quite a large fine.
And, and to me, we're about to get into a whole lot of work of enforcement, so this is a good time to make sure we have a process for coming up with a fee that makes sense, and not just we wing it every time, whether it's.
I'm not saying wing it every time, I'm just saying, it can be for every single day.
Of course, it can be huge, and we know that $8,000 is well in excess, but, but we should have some kind of logical approach to it.
Most of the city took 15 months to act, so it's kind of hard even here that we could charge every day, because the city took.
You wouldn't go back to the first day, you go to when you finally said.
But typically, HOA's and others, you get served with something, then that's when the clicker for the counter starts.
And I agree.
I understand, I understand, I want you to notice it says each day, and that is something that I think is important, that, don't overlook that.
I'm not arguing for a value, like, it should be lower, it should be higher, I'm just saying we should have.
I'm just saying, it could potentially be a large number, it could be, I'm just saying.
Anybody have a number in mind?
No, but I mean, I would like to know if there is a person, no offense to people who have the, the logic up here and have worked in it, mayor, is there a specific person that we need to call out to assess the, the damage as it stands now, to the water system?
He needs to hire somebody to do that, erosion and sediment.
That's, I'd like to see that, because you are affecting quite a bit of people on the water, for a waterfall in the water.
I would like that also, thank you.
But that is somebody that requires a license?
I would think it would.
I don't know if we could.
It's got to be acceptable to the state, we're, we're enforcing the state law, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Didn't I understand you to say, Your Honor, that you are an expert in that, or, did I misunderstand?
He is not.
You understood correctly, but I'm not, I'm the mayor right now, I'm not really in that.
Oh, you can't do it because of that?
That would be almost a conflict.
Yeah, I have a conflict interest, yes.
So what, so we're going above and beyond what's in here, which is fine.
I don't, I don't know if we can, in my thoughts, I don't know if we can set a number now, because we don't know what the potential, potential damage that has been done is.
Yeah, this is not, it's an occurrence on the code that's violated, not damage control of the property, because if it spelled that out, and we're going above and beyond, if we start saying, go out and assess the damage, because then I'd, I would ask for my own Freedom of Information Act request on everyone else that's been binged on this, what they had to do and the cost, that's where I'm feeling uncomfortable.
This is an appeal on only what, it's the $5,000 and the administrative $15,000.
Correct, we can't add up, go up, yeah, that should have been done in advance, we should have this discussion, yeah.
I'd like to say that as a homeowner on Molehead Lake, who just built the house, not too long ago, you've got away with stuff, there's no way, I mean, it's a dream that people have when they buy property on Molehead Lake, and you've managed to do it, and I don't know how you did it, and you got away with it, this law, but for five grand, you got one heck of a buy. You proved it.
Yeah, if you'll, if you'll call out a permit.
I would jump all over five grand to do what you did.
Oh, I would, yeah.
But.
If you'll, if you'll call out a permit, I'll write you the check right now.
It's, it's the law, you know, that's why I didn't, but I sure would, and I paid five grand all day long, your case is already done, and in my opinion, you got a heck of a deal.
Hey?
I, I agree.
I would like to, to make a recommendation, and this is just my personal thoughts on this. We have three violations that are, that are clearly approached here, the others don't apply here. I, I say that it's $1,000 for each violation, plus the expenses of Dune City, and he still has to comply with the erosion sediment control measures, and has to get the permits through Dune City to, to take care of those.
I want that done also, I just don't know who to go to.
I, I'm just giving my recommendation to the council, and that's, that's kind of where I'm sitting, because I believe that ignorance of the law is not an excuse, and I think you had the opportunity to correct these issues, when it was brought to your attention that you needed to have permits for these, and you neglected to do that.
On that note, I believe consistency of law is more important, that consistency of law and how we apply it here in Dune City, and we haven't, just, I'm on record, I'll say, you know, from what I've heard and seen, we apply it very subjectively in cases, I just, that's heartburn right now, and he did wrong, no doubt, but there's a whole lot of other people are currently doing wrong that we're doing nothing about, potentially, and others in the past have done it, where the council has said, go home and enjoy your property with zero penalty, and so that just creates a little heartache for me, because we're up here and we have no consistency, that's why I think Chris is going forward, we got to have a process to plan how this done, but it's been very subjective.
Our, our complaint is complaint driven, our law enforcement is complaint driven, if I don't get a complaint, I don't go look.
Right.
So that's what you're talking, that's why some people do, some people don't, and when we do find out about it, we do something about it.
Right, but we potentially have known issues internally that we're sitting on currently, and that's the part that I don't like where government comes in and kind of means, subject, I hate subjectivity, because this is supposed to be very in objective.
It's not subjective, we're, we're complaint driven.
I get, I get.
But we aren't the environmental police.
So what do you suggest?
No, I, I think any fees are solely not given to the city, they go into making, if the property erosion is such a concern of ours, then everything in fees needs to go to bringing the property back up to whatever standard, you know. So why, what's the city?
He still skipped out on the administrative process of.
Right, that's fine, but he's, he said that he'll pay whatever administrative fee backwards, but I think any other penalty goes to, you know, the city should use that, again, all I heard from all of us is it's so important erosion control, I drink the water, like everyone else up here that lives on Molehead, well, if it's that important, shouldn't we reinvest in the environment and spend that money to do the abatement or whatever it's called, to get the, the land and erosion taken care of? And that's why I would like to see it.
Or not put a number on it and say it has to be restored, if that's $12,000, you still beat it.
Restored, then we have to prescribe what restoration means.
No, whoever does the plan is going to prescribe, a professional has to submit a plan for review and approval.
Right.
Pay for a permit, and they're going to say, you need to plant 14 of these, 22 of these, and they need a minimum of five gallon drugs, or whatever it takes to.
Right, but we want, some of the rules here say it's the original vegetation, so it's not plant bees, 14 of these or that, it's whatever drugs were there.
That's what they would prescribe it.
Yeah.
And then there's different if it's native and non-native, and we just unfortunately don't know, because this all happened.
Do we have a vegetation plan for this sort of city, for Dune City?
We do, in the comprehensive plan.
So that's what Florence requires, you have to go off of theirs, and I agree with what you're saying, but there was a blatant, multiple changing of stories, that I knew I need to, didn't do it, well, I didn't recall, or I don't know, I'm not sure, multiple story changes where he said, he knew that he needed to do something, but I'm going to go ahead and do it, and I went ahead and did it, with direct.
I, I guess, what, what I'm hearing is, is you, your recommendation is, is whatever, whatever potential penalties or fines we assess would go toward the rehabilitation of the property.
Right, if it's that important, and we're opposing fines, and we're saying erosion, erosion, erosion.
Or it's whole.
I think it needs to be.
Yeah.
But why, what's the city going to do with the money to make the, what we click better?
With.
That's as a citizen, I'm talking as a citizen now.
I'm talking, he did something that was blamed, he owes some money to the city, then he needs to pay and restore it.
Right, it's the $1,527 and whatever sets.
No, that's just coverage costs, I think he goes beyond that.
It appeared it.
Yes.
So Jamie, if, if we collected the fine, could you put it in the water fund, which we already know is short? We have been investing in fisheries.
You guys can tell me to do whatever.
Okay.
You want. I, I believe that there needs to be.
So that's a possibility, we know the water fund is short, with all the expenses we've accrued, so there's a possibility there.
Yeah.
If that's sure, if that helps with.
Do you really need to be concerned tonight, where the money goes?
If you want to make part of your motion.
I think.
It's just running into the city and.
Yeah, but this, so, this is where I'm getting nodded up, is we're saying it's such a blatant issue, and it was, not denying that at all, but how are we going to remedy is using the money, I, as a citizen, I'm not even as a council member, I would want the shoreline, if we're saying it's that bad and how horrible it is, because we drink the water, then let's fix, use the funds from the.
The repair still is too.
Yeah, and you still have to.
That's items three, four, five.
And it doesn't matter what the city does with the money, if you did something wrong, he needs to pay the fine to the city.
I don't think it needs to go back into his pocket to improve his, you know, he just told himself, he got a hell of a deal.
So if we get it from this engineer, it's $300 to restore the, the native, because he can go get some seeds and throw it on there, we're going to be cool with that?
No, what we're saying is that we're going to require, you know, if they say that this has to be, you know, this tree has to be planted, okay, at what level to compensate for where, it's, I don't agree to a seed, no, because it's going to take 100-plus years to grow to where some of these trees were.
Right, but we're delegating, so this is where, we're delegating that authority to this engineer to prescribe the resolve, and if he comes back and says, you just got to plant this, because that's the best way to do their erosion control, we're delegating that authority to that engineer that's going to help provide a plant, and we can't say a word about it.
No, we have to.
No, we can't, I won't agree with that, yeah.
So we're going to go over, we're going to go over engineer.
But I would recommend that you go to, like, the Watershed Council or someplace like that, so you're not paying that much money, and that's what they do for the government, and they will do it for free.
For, for the resident or for us?
For him.
Okay.
Not for us, but for him.
So we'll have water quality expert put together.
Right, that part of the erosion control, needs to get due.
So we have to trust that part, that's already covered by state law.
Right.
So we, that, that is a must do.
Yeah, three, four, five.
I think so, absolutely.
And then, and then the fee on top of that, whatever we say that is, covers the, the overdue and the straight costs, so I'm going to do it.
That's.
Any extra, it was just you restoring water quality, shoreline somewhere, not on his property, he's got that, so we put it, Joe, to your point, we put it back into the environment, that we're saying is the one that we want to do.
Put that in your motion if you'd like.
Yeah.
But I don't think that's necessary, because we might find something else that.
But that's why we vote, I mean, and it's about environmental safety or not, is that a main concern or issue or not?
It depends on, we need an exact motion, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So what would we be putting as a plan to use that money for?
You can either say, the fine stands, and it's whatever, it goes in the general fund, or you could say it goes in the.
If we're talking about putting it back into the water, what do we want to propose?
It's short, and right now it's been paying for fisheries and that sort of thing, you know, to make sure we're in compliance with.
That's, to me, that's the most direct route to.
And that's where we have short haul right now, if you want me to.
Not the rightful fisheries that citizens should have done two years ago that are not compliant with law, but we're not enforcing it currently, right, I'm just saying, right?
Being caught up and reimbursed.
Yeah, no, what I'm saying, it's, it's about how law is used, and you can't use it in one situation if you don't agree with it, and not in another, or not in any.
No, and I think we hear you and we understand you on that, but this is just this, we know that there are far more out there that are not compliant, but we have to look at just this case right now.
I get it, so.
So who wants to make a motion? Anyone?
So we got to figure out our amount, right?
I'm open, I mean, I, I just wanted to be.
You've been here a long time.
I just wanted to be fair, and, and I get the fact that it has not been operated fairly in the past, or may not be operated fairly in the future.
There's an election coming up, isn't there?
Because everybody's going to see things in a different light and a different manner. And I agree with Joe, as far as if we're going to do something, we should do it for the betterment of the community, not for the betterment of.
Dune City.
Individual thought. Because I think, I think we want to maintain that we're here for the, the community, so I'm open to whatever you all think is, is honest and fair.
I think that's where we're all struggling on this dollar amount.
Yeah, Chris, can I make one?
Tell me, tell me your, your thought about where we start the clock, on, you knew you did wrong, you made no effort to correct it, where do we start the clock?
I'll make a motion.
Please.
With the $5,000 fine stand, it's a heck of a deal, you knew that, you said you'd rather pay a fine than five permits.
I do not remember saying that.
That, that was hearsay from a citizen, someone else who's not on record. That, that was hearsay from a citizen. Someone else who's not on record made a comment to Jamie, Jamie said that.
No, Jamie had him tell me. That's what I said. He said it to me.
He, he said that to me, too.
Oh, yeah, he did. Okay. That's my motion, the fine stand for five thousand and plus fifteen twenty-seven, whatever for administrative costs. And then he needs to get on the erosion control plan.
So items three, four, or five would remain as described, right? Get the plan, implement the plan, maintain it for two years.
That would be my motion, and my opinion again, we gotta have to do it for five grand. So is that fair? Be that it is.
Well, it's all subjective, right? It doesn't.
Of course.
It's one, it's fair, one, it's not.
We're dealing with subjective things here.
So we have a motion on the floor. Any specific comments to the specific term?
So we're very clear, he has to provide an erosion plan, but I've heard others had language from like a certified engineer, that's what, how this is written.
Well, it's gotta be submitted, reviewed, and approved by the city for it to be successful, so.
Right.
It's got, it says written approval of the city, so that part will take care of itself. So it's gotta be acceptable to the city in normal plan review.
Within ten days. So as it says, so within ten days, received a disorder responsible party, Jack Thomas, placed a less violent erosion and sediment control plan and application, including payment of all fees therefore, for review by the city. So within ten days, he would have to submit that, correct?
That's what it says.
Okay.
Is that?
And I don't think you can get it done enough.
I was gonna say, is that continuing to live in the election, Jamie? Want to make it thirty days? Is that realistic?
Well, how about thirty days with the option today? He can request, you can grant me the authority to grant an extension if he can't. I don't know what everybody's schedules is.
You can't get it, sure.
You know, I can't get it done. That's not his fault, it's somebody else's.
We'll leave that to staff to, to work out the details on the permitting, depending on how long it takes.
No, I don't think so. I think we should set a time limit on it.
Well, thirty days, but Jamie can extend it if we're waiting for.
With, with city council permission.
Separate permission?
If we need to, if we need to extend it, if it needs to be extended.
Okay, thirty days. So if it doesn't happen in the thirty, we'll put it on.
I think something, I need a secondary decision making needs to be applied there.
Yeah, and, sorry for taking all this time. That's just, that says erosion control plan approved by the city. Do we have outlines that what, how to meet this erosion? It becomes, you know, we're, so we have.
Yeah, the, the erosion control plan is prescribed in the code, then I gave him a copy tonight.
Okay. Okay, so I wanna make sure we don't have any more lack of clarity or subjectivity.
No, because it's.
Could I clarify one thing that I said?
No, let us finish.
So we're saying thirty days no matter what?
Well, thirty days, and we, we'll be on the sixteenth of April if there's an extension needed. That's our next, that'd be the closest to thirty days, so you'll hear this again if, if there's no success.
The sixteen to April.
So there being no change in the motion, then what are we talking about?
This date, right, it says ten days, it'll be.
And the motion was the, the five grand plus the fifteen hundred and twenty-seven, and he handles erosion control.
Okay.
And.
But if I go back there, Rich, there, it states a violation's a thousand dollars, and we're saying there's three violations per day.
Is this for each day?
I'm not, I'm not saying three violations. The motion is five thousand dollars for what has happened.
So that's, that's the appeal, is it five thousand or not five thousand? So it's not really an argument, like, how many days are there on this violation?
Right.
So anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor?
I'm gonna abstain.
I'm gonna abstain.
No, if you agree. Do you want to vote no or you want to abstain?
I'll abstain for now, but.
How many, hang on, I'm on the eyes, I got.
Somebody called for a vote.
Yeah, two eyes. Nay?
What, the weak?
He's a nay.
Nay. Rich is nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. And do I abstain?
I, I, I don't agree with it.
But are you voting no or are you abstaining?
I vote no.
I'll, I'll vote no then. All right, so it's three, three.
So that goes to the mayor.
You do think that goes to the mayor?
Yes, three, three.
Yes, sir. We're mayor.
This way you're before.
There you go.
Welcome to being mayor.
Discussion?
We know we already did a discussion.
No, that's a fair question. Can I abstain or do I?
Oh, I would.
I have, well, can I, Jamie, can I entertain a new motion? Which is normally what you get if there's, if there's, if you dead lock. I mean, if it's half close, I would rather entertain a new motion.
Why don't I go get my, my Robert Schulze order?
No, you said time order.
You're at the time right here.
But if you go to the, then it's, it's from the time, and you had to introduce a new motion.
Yeah, and you abstain, it would be, well.
New motion then.
Exactly, and then you get someplace where we're all more comfortable.
I just wanted to get it to.
Yeah? No, and we're, you know, I appreciate that works.
But talking's an important part of it.
It is.
I didn't say, oh, I don't know.
No. If I'm saying you can't just vote, I would like to hear why others are saying that.
All right, I'm gonna abstain then. I, we need a new motion.
I just need, we need to do it so we can move on.
Yeah.
Move it back in a discussion, but we really think it's move on.
Again, I disagree, that's fine. So who said, Rich, what do you feel?
Yeah. I, I think the, the only thing that we can do is what is, I reckon provable in here as far as the violation goes, one, two, and three.
Sure. Thank you.
Three, four, or five?
Three, four, and five.
Okay.
And then, and then fees collected for the city. Beyond that, I don't, I don't feel that we can, we can justify the rest of it, because it's not written in there to justify them. So, I mean, if it were.
Meaning the fine, the five thousand?
Hmm?
Meaning five thousand?
Yeah, because it says a thousand dollars per violation per day. Well, it.
But technically, if I'm wrong, this is just a, a request from the code enforcement officer as to what she would like to see done.
We have action in order, but the violations include multiple pieces, right?
It's within ten days of the written receipt of this order after this, right here, correct?
That's just the erosion control plan is, was required to be submitted within ten days. And we changed that to thirty in that motion, just to make sure you had enough time to get one submitted to the city. But that, that violation included a fire pit in the sidewalk and grading within fifty feet, removal of vegetation within twenty-five. So there were multiple pieces of one fifty-five, that's violation. So there's more than a single violation, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
And then it could be a thousand dollars per violation per day. So there's probably at least four distinct violations of one fifty-five, and then it's, it's multiple days, so. But you could adjust the number if you say a fifteen, it should be four thousand, or, or twenty-five hundred. You know, tell me what you think would be more fair.
I, I guess my, my first recommendation, three thousand dollars plus the, the collection of the city's expenses.
Three thousand?
Yeah, three thousand. And Jamie has to comply with the erosion control.
And as stated, except we'll say thirty days, if you need a time extension, Melissa wanted to come back to council, that would be the sixteenth.
I agree with that.
Okay. So, which is really like twenty-eight days, but, um, does that make sense?
Yep.
Uh, anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor? All right. Chris?
I'll abstain. Please, please vote.
Uh, same, same, of course.
Abstain or no? You need to.
No.
In my opinion.
Also, no.
No. You want a day? You want a day or you want to go to stay? Okay.
I'm three. No.
Yes. So you guys, three and three. I'm gonna vote aye on this. I think it's a reasonable compromise. I agree, there's inconsistencies. At the same time, you can't let this happen while the mayor and council sit over and say that you can't make an example and just do whatever you want, because somebody else might have done that. I mean, the code, we've got houses that were built twenty-five years before Dune City was a big one. So we're not held responsible for those past deeds. Since this code's been adopted, it's our job to enforce the code. And I think it started correctly. I think you made a call to the city. I trust Lanny one hundred percent. I think she's very good at what she did. I was on the planning commission, worked with her. So I think it started out right, and then it didn't go anywhere. So I don't think, I agree with Rich, ignorance of the law is not an excuse. I'm a resident as well, and I'm cautious not causing labor violations, especially now I'm sitting here with millions of people watching.
Millions and millions.
I'm sorry. So, uh, so that passes with those adjusted terms. So Jamie, we will put you in touch with the right folks to get this sediment control and erosion plan. And we want you to do that quickly, so that it's either issued before our April sixteenth meeting, or you're close, so that the staff.
Can you be able to tell me who I go to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll make some calls off and get that to lunch now.
So it'll be your responsibility to apply and pay for that, and come back here and submit it and pay for a permit before the April sixteenth meeting.
She would like me, wouldn't it? If I need to write, come to you to write the permit, or, or they?
It'd be to us. Well, it'd be to Pam.
I need your advice on this, because I know nothing about.
You come right back here?
I would encourage you to come down to city hall and ask all those questions.
Ring that bell.
Is there anything else I need to do?
I need to get a permit.
And we're not around Fridays.
Monday through Thursday, ten to four.
So am I in agreement then that it came to three thousand dollars?
Yeah.
I will send you a revised order, something you'll know that.
Now, if I had gotten a permit for that before, in other words, a, a permit, it would have been legal for me to do that. Is that my understanding?
Say, I got to know. I don't think it would have ever been issued to do what you did, if you applied for, compared, you had different terms.
No, it's yes.
And they would have inventoried the vegetation and drawn a sketch and said, don't touch anything here, you can touch a little bit here.
Oh, my God, you're talking about three acres area.
And you can add an eight-foot path to your dock, and you'll comply, and, uh, but we're way past that. So based on what you have, you're gonna do this erosion control and sediment control plan to make sure that bank is protected, and they'll make recommendations of anything that needs to be removed that is adverse to water quality. And then you have two years to maintain it and report back to the city, and then, and then just leave it alone, let it grow.
In the meantime, if, if he's done some erosion stuff, if he can work on that till we can get the.
I suggest you don't.
No, we cannot.
No, wait.
Put your shoulder down. Unless you're removing tires, asphalt, I think I'm safe to say, if you're removing those.
I don't think we should say anything. I think you need to, you know, consult with who you need to.
Don't do anything until you get a permit.
Thank you.
No, sorry. Where does that take us? We're still on, huh?
Yeah, all business.
We're in the table.
All right. That takes us to the whole business. We have no report on this franchise agreement, no report on the collections agreement. That's in front of the attorney for review?
I'm sorry?
The collections agreement is.
The attorney has reviewed and sent responses. I haven't had a chance.
Okay.
To put those in the form of a letter to go.
All right, and item C, I would motion we continue to our next work session. Yes, that's the short term amendment, was that?
No. No.
This is court denied.
No.
Okay.
You have fifteen hours.
You're wasting time, so, thank you. I know what it says. I'm the mayor. You're gonna stay till one AM, don't get me started. Uh, there's no executive session tonight. For the good of the order, I have nothing else. Susan? Melissa?
No.
No, sir.
Tom? Chris? Rich? All right, thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do you want to say? All right, so adjourned. Agreed.
I'll, who seconded it?
Page forty-five.
Everyone.
Susan, everybody.